So calling this, I guess, call it to order, right? And we have to vote to go into non-public?
Nope, I don't think we, I don't think we need to go into non-public anymore, Neil. I think that the team has presented and I think they're well-prepared. So I think we can.
Okay.
Workshop.
So we're not going to talk about individuals then, or?
Correct.
Okay. All right, you're meeting, Esther.
All right, that means I just get to say that the team has worked pretty hard to develop a very fiscally responsible budget, given the things I outlined in the email with their retirement increases and health benefits, et cetera, that we don't have much control over. So I, they are well-prepared to move forward and kind of go over the highlights of the large changes and then answer any questions that you might have. Sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay. Take it away.
So I just thought I'd just jump in and just talk about just some of the overarching goals and then we'll jump into more of the specifics. So, you know, we had a lot, a number of goals. Certainly maintaining the quality of the academic program is there. Supporting, you know, student-teacher relationships and the quality sped program are part of all of what we want to do. Continue to look forward with competency-based education. And then as we hopefully, as we look to the fall, we won't need as much materials around COVID, but continue to be really mindful of health and safety of students and, and really applaud all the work you've done as a board with DEIJ and we're going to continue to work for that. So those are sort of the overarching goals that we're looking towards as we go towards developing this budget.
And so as Esther mentioned at the outset, the two sort of major factors that we don't have a ton of control over are the retirement expenses and the healthcare costs from the health insurance. So of those two things, that's, you know, 400, almost $410,000 for retirement and about just under $240,000. So with those two things, the budget is 2.99% of an increase over our budget last year. And, but the majority of that is due to those two major drivers. What we are adding to the budget is 0.28%. So the biggest, the only addition, I guess you could say that we're adding is in the staffing area, which would be moving our 60% technology integrator from being grant-funded to the general fund. And then we have Steve will share the next part.
Yeah, I just, the reason that that particular position remained in the budget is, as you know, we added an enormous number of devices. We've gone to one-to-one and just, it's just really important to be able to maintain that as well as support our teachers with their devices. So our technology needs have grown significantly in terms of the staff and support that they require. So that's why that position was a priority for the budget. In terms of other staffing, we did look, because we had such a huge amount of money that was coming in through the retirement and healthcare, we really had to look really carefully at the budget in terms of where we could make some modifications so that we could still come in at a fiscally responsible budget. We did do some shifting of staff roles and responsibilities. And we also did some repurposing of staff in terms of meeting needs. One of our priorities was to maintain class size. We didn't make any changes in terms of classroom teachers. We did reduce some of our general education aides in order to meet some of the fiscal needs. We did take away the aides who probably worked the least with students directly are picture and writing aides. We have three of those positions in the budget. And they are primarily clerical in terms of their nature. And so we didn't hold on to those positions. We're going to have to look at other ways to support that program. The other place that we looked at was, we really looked at redesigning the way that we're doing reading interventions. Beth and Renee can speak a lot more about this. They're working with a consultant currently. And we had nine part-time aides in first grade. Three of those are currently not filled. We are looking to shift the funding for those aides to Title I and also just relook at the design of those interventions. We're also shifting how we use our kindergarten aides, so they're more targeted intervention. So overall, looking at reducing general education aides and the number of general education aides in the building and then looking at the Title I budget to provide the same sorts of interventions, but in a more targeted manner. So you'll see those positions no longer in the budget. We also have held on the budget, an additional ESOL position, which we haven't used for several years. We put it in there a year after we were starting to have our numbers grow, but they've got to be more reasonable. And Susan Collins has been able to provide support to both buildings, which she had done for many, many years. So we took that position back out of the budget as another way to be, you know, support the funding. And so it was those that were the changes that allowed us to come in still at a reasonable budget. I just, I don't know if that makes a lot of sense, but those are the things. It was, I will say, one of the tougher decision-making conversations I've had in my time here. But we also were conscious of the time period we're in.
And just a couple of other additions on there too, is that if you look through the budget report, you'll notice that a lot of the lines are flat from, from past years, except for there's a math pilot, or excuse me, a chunk in math that is used. We're presuming that will go forward with the math pilot that we're currently using. So there's an increase there. There's a line specifically for COVID. We use the calculation of $30 per student to calculate about how much, you know, cleaning supplies, PPE, that kind of thing that we would, that we would need. And I think those are the items that would really stand out. We reduced our technology line as well because of some of the purchases we've been able to make like last summer, for example, so we wouldn't necessarily need as much coming this year. In addition to using grant funds to try and round ourselves out in that front.
The other, the other case I should say is a lot of those positions have actually, like two of the aides who are doing fiction writing this year have already been shifted. Both have been trained as LMAs. So they're no longer doing that work at all currently. So I really actually only have one person who still identify that this year. She's doing more recess and lunch aides than picture. This year, we're not doing the program with the aides that we currently have, but we've repurposed them for others, other jobs in the building that we needed to meet with the situation that we have this year. So that also sort of added to that. So in terms of the number of positions with positions unfilled and positions repurposed, the number of staff will lose positions has been significantly reduced.
Can I just speak quickly just to special education? We did level fund it for next year. And when we did need to move money, we really looked at our last two years of trends for funding and where we could move money to more appropriate lines. So if you look at the transportation line in special education, that's decreased by $50,000 for each building, but the out-of-district cost has increased by $50,000 in each building. So most of my lines are level funded. And then if I needed to move money into another budget line, I was able to find the money in the budget somewhere else.
So those are kind of the highlights of the, of any major changes. And as you can tell, not, not a whole lot of differences from last year, except for the staffing. Just wanted to note that the tech integrator position this year that's grant-funded was funded through that CARES money. So that grant, we don't expect to get next year, which is not usually like Title I or Title II or IV. We get some every year. We don't expect that CARES money will exist next year. So that's the main reason we shifted that over to the operating budget. Because with all those computers, that's proved to be a pretty, a very valuable position. So we kept that status quo as far as the time, that three days a week, that's there presently working and presently being paid through the CARES Act grant, the SIR grant. So that's why it didn't exist in this current budget.
Questions? I have some, but I don't want to go first.
I have a question about the aides. When we talk, use the term aides, are we, is that the same as saying a paraprofessional?
Yes.
Same role? Okay.
Well, there's, there's actually, there's different types of paraprofessionals within the building. But they all fall under mostly the same contract. There's special ed paraprofessionals. There's kindergarten aides who work as paraprofessionals. The positions that we're talking about specifically are, we've had three, what are called part-time, three-hour-per-day, 15-hour-per-week picture and writing aides who primarily perform clerical work. And then we were talking, we had in the budget nine three-hour math literacy aides in first grade, part-time, and we're looking to shift that cost to Title I and reconfigure that piece. That, and so that's the second group of aides that we're talking about. All of whom fell under what are called general education aides, not special ed ed paraplegics.
So in terms of a classroom experience for a teacher, they in a previous year may have had an aide for part of the day, but going forward, might not.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Beth and Renee talk more about that because they've been working a lot with a consultant on reading. So they can kind of describe how they would be used more.
I, I would say yes and no, Sarah, because we started this journey, not this year, but last year or the year before, where Beth had started to really look at what we call literacy aides, which spent half their day in the first grade classrooms. And we, we set up being literacy aged, we worked on them becoming interventionist. So they didn't necessarily stay in that classroom the whole morning. Instead, they did some targeted interventions based on our universal screeners and they saw our kids for short periods of time and provided data. So Main Street's been on a kind of a journey away from first grade having a parent in their classroom for half the day for the last couple of years and moving much towards evolving the multi-tiered system of support. And this year, a lot of the work has been on sort of strengthening our knowledge and understanding of the current curriculum that Main Street's adopted. A big chunk of the work, and I, I think Beth would agree, is strengthening our universal screeners and our diagnostics on sort of what intervention the student needs. And then how do we use the interventionist to target that specific skillset really specifically, really honestly, and honestly, really quickly? If it's a 15-minute drill every day instead of a 30-minute holistic group, just because it's a one pillar of the reading, then that's what we've been working on doing. And so it's, it's, it does seem like in the past, Main Street had a history of having interventions or in another adult in the classroom for the whole day. But I think it would be important for you to know that we've been working towards moving away from just that model and being much more targeted and sort of who the kids and the students interact with and what the intervention is doing with the student.
Yeah, and I just want to add, we looked at the, I know Beth and I know the whole admin team looked at the data longitudinally. And one of the reasons they started to make the shift was a year ago, was the data was not supporting that that was really helping the students progress and make advancements and close the gap because it wasn't really targeted. So in other words, if one student might need comprehension and another one might need help with word retrieval, let's say. And, but yet they would go in and do the same thing. So the kids that needed maybe the word retrieval weren't getting that. They were getting comprehension, which they didn't need. So really targeting them, it's part of that competency-based education process also, meeting kids where they're at. So really learn how to use those assessments and then target that exactly what that student needs. And it might be two or three kids that need it, but again, they don't need three hours of it. So kind of dividing up that time and using people more wisely has allowed us to shift responsibilities and repurpose to where they can have the greatest impact with students. And again, I think it's really important that this isn't new to Main Street. This is kind of a linear progression. So almost regardless of, let's say, the retirement didn't go up at all, we would have looked at this program of how we were delivering interventions and targeted services anyway. It has been a conversation with the admin team for, since I've been working with Exeter, just looking at that data, trying to, trying to figure out how to get kids what they need and close those gaps faster and sooner than they have been in the past. So that's really the catalyst of looking at that particular line because that was an area we're revamping anyway.
Yeah, I guess my follow-up to comment or question would be that, you know, often we think that for children in the younger grades, for classroom management, for teachers, having an aide is supportive. I think the other thing that I heard Steve say was that we're working to keep our class sizes small so that teacher classroom management skills with our teachers who are dynamic and well-trained can continue to engage the students. Does that mean that most teachers won't have anyone else in their classroom during the day? Or is this sort of targeted to just a specific grade level?
You'll have support. It won't be as consistent in terms of a body being there for three hours solid, the way it was. So you, you will see that reduction, Sarah. There's no question about that. You'll have, you'll, it's, the support will be, I mean, and part of it again is sort of, well, part of it's looking at fiscally, where could we make the cuts the most? And the last place I wanted to make the cut as a principal would be a classroom position because I, I really felt that those are key. So in terms of where we felt we can make the adjustments and still provide, meet students' needs, this made more sense to look at in terms of this year's budget.
And Sarah, I will, I will add to the, it's also looking at what, what resources we have within the building and being very targeted and specific in how we provide support to students. And so that's really been a lot of our work in the past year. And as we move forward, working with a consultant to help us create a really strong, multi-tiered system of supports is going to be really helpful in being able to do that.
Thank you so much.
Dawn or Patrick?
I don't have anything.
Patrick, I think you're muted.
So I have questions, but I don't know if you wanted to ask anything, Dawn, or I can just jump in.
Yeah, I don't have anything specific right now. I'm just taking it all in.
Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm not muted now, right? So, so you, it sounds like there are several aid positions that are either cut or the costs are shifted. How, how much money are we talking about with those positions?
Molly, do you want to give that?
I don't have the specific number in front of me in regards to those positions because I don't have exactly how many were taken out.
I could.
Tell you, there's an overall, there's an overall reduction in Main Street regular ed aides of $126,678.96. Whether all of those are exactly those positions, because we move people around, we would have to dig deeper and we can do that. But that's the overall reduction in the regular ed aide. So some of that moved into Title I paying for that and some of that was a flat-out reduction.
Do you know, do you know how many positions that is for 120? Do you, let me ask it a different way. Do you know, how much does it cost us to fund an aide position that you're talking about? That's three hours, 15 hours a week, I think is what you said.
It's about $12,000 to $13,000 for each position roughly. And it's, so you're, you're talking three picture and writing aides and nine literacy aides, each of which were three hours each.
So that would be 1200 and it sounds like $130,000 is the number that Esther said would be about 10 of them.
That's exactly, that's exactly right, Patrick.
A couple of them might, might be funded under another source or shifted somehow.
Right, they, we would be looking at shifting, hiring for the same type of position through Title I.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the same number though.
Yeah, and to clarify, it actually wouldn't be the same type of position. It's for a full-day position. So that creates a lot more flexibility for that interventionist to travel throughout the day because we're only there for three hours, all the same three hours at the same time. I don't have anyone in the afternoon. So if a class has specials in the morning, it's really hard to build a schedule to service their needs. So that was the other thing, move some money and have them there all day. So now I can move them around to meet the needs of the classrooms all day long instead of a one-three-hour block all at the same time.
So has, okay, but I hear you say move money. I, I guess, is money being moved at the $130,000 to be moved? Or is that money that's being saved and you're trying to fund it through a different source?
Correct, moved into Title I grant, I should have said, grant-funded.
And are we pretty sure that we have, we either have the money or we'll be able to get the money for Title I?
Yeah.
For those purposes? And why couldn't we have funded the other positions under that? Because they weren't full-day or they had a different purpose?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. And how many are, and, and so overall, in terms of staffing and staffing hours with the Title I funding, is there a reduction of sort of staffing hours and support?
Yeah, I think, Steve, you said there was a reduction of three people. Am I remembering that right or no?
Well, I, we haven't, I don't, I, I don't know exactly how many people we're talking about for Title I. So you've got, you wouldn't be replacing your three aides who are picture and writing. That program would become teacher-responsible in terms of the picture, the, the creation of the books that they've done. You would be looking at the work that was done for the reading intervention and math intervention by the part-time people being done by the staff would be, and you might have, oh, I mean, it would be, I would expect, some of the people who are working currently in those positions would be shifting to the Title I positions. Exactly what numbers, I'm not sure, would be covered under that.
Yeah, I think I was trying to ask more, I don't know, just in terms of staff hours that are available, if there's a reduction, because it's, from what I understood, from what Esther just said, that it sounds like we're going to have some full-time positions, which would take care of, you know, two or more part-time positions, maybe two and a half part-time positions for that matter. And, you know, I was curious, I understand, because Sarah had asked the question about, would someone be assigned to each room and would there be a dedicated person in each room? And the answer is no, and, and you explained why. That wasn't a really effective model, didn't really help student learning or advancement. So you're shifting to a different model where there's sort of a full-time person, more flexibility. And there's some savings, partially because there's a shift to grant money. But it sounds like there's also some savings, I'm gathering from listening to you talk, that there's also a desire to save money to keep the budgetary increase to, you know, a manageable level.
That's exactly right, Patrick.
And so I think for that part of it, I'm just, you know, I think as we sort of talked that through with you, I just wanted to understand the difference between the two because, you know, that's, that's where, at times, you know, we've had discussions of, boy, we don't want to, you know, we wish we had this person, but boy, then the budget's going to be too high. And we've sort of gone back and forth and continued to have that conversation. And sometimes we have at, sort of added a position back in. And sometimes we've said, no, we can't, you know, that doesn't make sense. It's too much to pass on to the taxpayers. But that's a different question than if it's not really a need or want or desire. So for example, these part-time positions, which are shifting to full-time positions, that sounds, I heard you say, whether or not there's any budgetary concerns, you're, you are looking to move in that area anyhow because it just makes more sense. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Yes, I think, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong. I think if, I think another cut that we made during this process was we had brought the tech integrator in five days a week, full-time initially into this budget. I think that's an area that may get, that the three days is a stretch. So if, if the board is considering, thinking, okay, we, we think the taxpayer can, can bear a little bit more of an increase, what I heard in our development, you guys correct me, I'm wrong, is that we would, we would look to move that position from three days to five days because it's between the two schools and there, everybody has a one-to-one. And if everyone returns, teachers do need that support, you know? And so that is one thing we brought it over at five days a week officially. And then trying to be fiscally responsible, we cut that back to three. So I think that's one of those positions that we would love to bring over at five days a week, but we didn't for the budget reason.
And, and costs between three days and five days, does five days mean that you get full-time benefits? And then that adds in a whole nother chunk on top of that. But do you, you have a sense, I mean, it probably could be double, but do, but do you have a sense of what kind of dollars we're talking about?
Yep. I think full-time is usually right around, right around the $100,000 mark with the benefits. And so part-time, we can look in the line. I think the part-time was right around 46 to 50. Am I remembering that right, Molly? Because the benefits are prorated.
Yes, and, yes.
That was exactly what I was guesstimating, that it would be about double. So that's an additional $50,000. And it sounds like if you all were trying to prioritize, if there were extra money somehow, so to speak, that you would, you would rather the next $50,000 went towards that tech position than aides positions. Is that right?
Yeah, and I can give an example even just today, that, I mean, she's, this, this position is instrumental to what we're doing and everything from taking in Chromebooks that have vomit on them to, to, and exchanging for, for one that's working to, I mean, helping figure out seesaw. When we made the transition from remote to in-person and kids change classrooms, just working through the backend, trying to make sure staff know how to access students that either moved into their classroom, another classroom, or moved out for a report card and reporting reasons. So she's, I mean, kind of like a jack-of-all-trades. And then once this craziness winds down, she'll be helping teachers directly, trying to integrate new, you know, tools into their classroom, regular classroom instruction, so.
And if there was some sort of cares or whatever the next act might be called money, of course, we would look at that to potentially, you know, expand the position. Can we put it in, for example, if it ended up in the budget at three days a week? And it turns out that there is grant money available in the spring, that's going to be for the next year somehow, that we could expand the position to five days a week?
Yes, we could do that. You can write, you can have two different funding sources for one position, yes.
Um, so I had a question about some of the things. I tried to write some things down, so I remembered. One was, I had a question generally about last year, when we were about this time, when we were going through the budgeting process, we entered into a sort of side memorandum of agreement with the unions, the associations about early retirements. And at that time, when we talked about it in our meetings, I thought we talked about hundreds of thousands of dollars that we'd be saving in this year's budget. If I remember right, it was like $300,000 or, or $500,000. I don't remember now exactly the number, but it was a large number. And I'm curious about kind of what, what, where are we with that? You know, did, was that money, was the savings realized? Was it not realized? Just kind of what's the status and the update on that? Because we did talk to the voters about that. It was part of our public conversation and I think we have responsibility to be able to address that.
Molly and Michelle.
If we don't know the answer tonight, that's fine. I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot. I think that's one of the questions though, that, that we should just feel that we're prepared to answer if that comes up.
Patrick, we prepped this question. We knew that you would follow up because you had talked a lot about that last year. So we were like, I know Patrick's going to ask this, so we should be able to answer you tonight.
Yeah, and Patrick, you will see that on the individual lines itself. So we'd have to pick a line where one of our folks did retire. And I think, but what we'd probably have to go, go back and do is look at where each of those retirees were on the individual lines, but you will see that throughout the document where we had the individual retirees retire.
On page one toward the bottom is a line that says retirement and it's negative 108,9196. Is that an example?
So that's where we had, yeah, so that's where we had the 175. That's where we had the payout and now we're, just have the provision for $75,000. So that is part of it. So that's where you're going to see the savings, yes, part of it. But you're going to see the individual salaries where salary savings with the offset of the rehires on the individual lines itself.
Can I ask a question? Because I would imagine this would answer part of it, but I don't know for certain. You have for increases on this budget, the major drivers being insurance. You have for increases on this budget, the major drivers being insurance and retirement. Every year, there's an increase due to the contract negotiations and that we're not seeing that. And I'm just imagining that part of what, that reason we're not seeing that increase on this budget is because it was absorbed by the differences in salaries from the reduced salaries. Is that, would that be a reasonable assumption?
Yeah, that would be a reasonable assumption. I'm just trying to find here, one of our individuals that retired.
Molly, on the first page, it says basic classroom salaries, Main Street and Lincoln Street. You'll see a savings at Main Street of 76, 531 and a savings of 29, 572. So that's the offset of savings between the new hire and the old hire, which is where we anticipated that savings on the retirement.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was looking for, was that individual line where the retirees used to be that were replaced by a lower salary.
So those two combined in just the basics, so that's not counting music or art or those other kinds of positions, is a little over 100,000 there.
You could also look at our two library, library positions, because both of our librarians retired. And so that, you know, spells it out to an individual as well, if that's on page eight down at the bottom.
I asked this because I don't, it's, it sounds like we don't, and I appreciate that you prepped it, so to speak, but, but you may not have the information. I was hoping we might be able to gather tonight. And again, that's fine. I don't, I'm not looking for an immediate answer. But are we able to say, for example, we had eight people retire. Out of those eight positions, you know, based on what their salaries were and what the, you know, we just lumped them together. Eight people or whatever the number is and who retired, we paid out their retirement, we hired eight new people. The cost differential was X number of dollars that, that we saved in salary money.
Yeah, we can put together that summary for you.
That would be helpful. And I think that's, I think the point that Steve brought out was one where my head went with this too, is that, you know, there's that, usually that is a driver. I don't remember where we are in the, in the teacher contract in terms of what the percentage increase was supposed to be in, plus there's always steps and there's other sorts of things that happen. But that number almost always, you know, will go up in the fact that it's not, and not really showing up in our budget as a, you know, something we're looking for the taxpayers to pay for, then, you know, maybe that's the explanation why. Do, so, yeah, so anyhow, that's, if you're able to gather that information at a future time, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I'm also just looking right now, I put together a spreadsheet, I'm just looking for it right now. So if you want, I could share my screen real quickly, because I have, I have a lot of the information, I think, that you're looking for, Patrick. It's, let me just share my, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so can you guys see my screen now?
Yes.
So this is what you were looking for, Patrick, right here. So this, this is this, what I did is I broke down the budget into these categories. So here, the fiscal 21 total was 12.336 million. Here you can see, even with the contractual increases, it's less than last year because of the retirees coming in, the replacements at a lower rate. So while this doesn't spell it out specifically related to the retirees, the largest impact of the delta between the 12.3 and the 12.1 is exactly what you're looking for.
So that's helpful. I would, if we're able to just break it down to that. So it looks like it's $200,000 less when you include the salary increases as well. If you're able to separate out the salary increases, just the difference between former, you know, the, the pay, the salary of the folks that just left us and the salary of the folks that joined us lumped together. I don't, I'm individual by individual, of course, just overall that what, what we ended up actually realizing in savings. I think that would be really helpful to, to point that back out.
Okay.
Paid at least $200,000 and, and more because you're, you're including the salary number two. Increase.
So I can back out the, the salary increases and then put together just specifically the retirees on those savings. We broke it down to this level. And then also threw up a pie chart here to see as to what makes up your expenses.
Hey Molly?
Yeah?
What is the 75,000 that's in there for this budget?
The 75,000 in the retirement line?
Yeah, sorry.
So that would be a provision for retirement for folks that are retiring this year and any payouts that would be according to that.
So it's not, it's not an incentive like we had last year?
Nope.
Can I, this is sort of a rant, so it might seem like a rant, well, two different questions. One is about, you mentioned DEIJ. So that's, that's in the budget now? Is that somewhere? Is that what you said?
So DEIJ is in the cooperative budget, that all, all.
Different sort of thing. I'm just talking about the Exeter initiative.
So, so Patrick, we mentioned that we do not have a line item for DEIJ specifically in this budget because we are covering it through Title II-A, which is the professional development grant that we do know exactly how much money we're gonna get. So we're gonna support, continue to support the initiative. But we just want to be really clear that we're committed to it. So even though we didn't add, we didn't need to add a line to this year's budget to do the professional development that we want to continue to do, but it continues to be one of our goals. We just listed it as one of our goals.
How much, okay, that's helpful. I bet, well, I, I don't understand how much money that is and what that, I understand what you just said. How much money is that? That's related. I know it's not DEIJ, it's overall, all professional development that's out of Title II, you said, right?
Right, right now, it's, each district contributes some of their grant. And so, and then, for example, any training we do district-wide, oftentimes the co-op grant can pay for that because the percentage wise of co-op administrators is larger. So I've written $15,000 in the co-op grant for DEI training. I'd have to, I can double check if you give me a minute while you're talking to see what we're working with specifically for Exeter.
I'm looking it up right now, Esther.
Cause we're just finalizing those grants. So not only is the number that Drew's gonna share for Exeter, for just Exeter, on top of that, we have $15,000. It often supports our, everybody in the SAU when our administrators do training, when we do like a professional development day and we invite everyone to come. So usually that, that grant covers it. So it's, it's whatever we've written in here, plus there's actually more too.
I don't know, maybe Molly can answer this. There was some provision where we could carry over, potentially carry over money from last year. I'm not quite sure what the status is. Let me just ask it more generally. Is there some sort of provision where we can carry over money from this year into the following budget year?
So this current year, that was for right now from last year. Is that what you're referring to, Patrick?
I'm talking about the 2020 to 2021 year. If we have money that's not spent, can it be carried over into next year's budget?
No.
Go ahead. Yeah, there was, there was the opportunity to carry it over from last year into this year with emergency order number 38. Now, I, I was on a business administrator's call where they were talking about having the possibility of a 2.55% potential carryover, but I would have to do some research to see if Exeter has already adopted that. Or some people are putting it on the ballot this coming March. I'd, I'd have to do some more reach, research on that, though.
Okay, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. That's really interesting what you just said. So in some places, it's either been adopted or potentially individual towns are, are putting that on a ballot as a one-year sort of provision or as a provision?
It would be a reoccurring thing, but you'd have to take a vote. I actually, I have, someone just sent me some stuff today in my email about that. So I'd have to take a look as to the example that I got from the other business administrator.
Okay, yeah, I don't know whether we'd be interested in that or not. I know this past year, it made me think about it because this past year, I know you had talked about there's an emergency order, there's an ability to carry over some money because of the COVID concerns. And I heard Drew and Steve talk about that there's additional monies that's being set aside in the budget to address COVID concerns. And I'd wondered whether or not we would have the ability to carry over money for COVID concerns if we felt that, if there was that need.
We, we can prepay, I believe, right? Like we did last, last year. Can we prepay for expenses with the hope of using that money for other uses?
We'll, we'll go through the same process we always do, Neil, at the end of the year. So as we get closer, we know what that fund balance is. And then we, we bring to the board and we do another workshop and kind of go through that list and what makes sense. And for example, retirement's usually on that list. So if there was money to pay, for example, Steve's retirement, we've built it into this current budget and that 75,000 dollar line, that's some of Steve's retirement benefit. But if the board chooses to pay that out of a fund balance, then that opens up that money in this budget.
But to Patrick's point, it may be a different mechanism, but it might have the net same effect, right?
Yeah, yes, yes. Either way, you're, you're just, it's my understanding currently, you were able to do it later after the fund balance deadline has passed. So that's really what you're asking for is, okay, we've decided in September that, yeah, we need 20,000 more dollars. Normally you can't go back because you've closed that out and you've, and the board's already said what they're gonna decide by June 30th. This allows you to go back up to a certain percentage, not only for two years ago into this budget that the board said, no, we don't want to do that when we talked about that. Sounds like they're considering, do they want to have that option again for this coming year? And Molly will find out more about that, it sounds like.
Yeah, I was, I was trying, trying to search my email about that, because, but I can definitely do some more research on that. It, you wouldn't be able to do like the emergency order 38 reopen last year, would have to be voted on before the end of the year.
Another emergency order, right?
Patrick, I found our worksheet from last year when we were talking about the provision for retirement. And, you know, making, we were talking about spending it in last year's budget and thinking about the savings. It was 165,771, assuming 9.5 people retire and we replace at M3. That's the amount at our budget workshop we looked at. I don't know if that gives you context in terms of, and then if you look at the salaries that, of what Molly just put up, the difference between that, that whole line item, if I got it right, I was doing the math quickly, is 204,231. Does that sound right, Molly? Between those two numbers that you showed of full salaries?
So those salaries right there, I'm sorry, go ahead. So is someone talking?
No, go ahead. That was the number we talked about, that 165 last year in, that we spent in the retirements.
Yeah, and it's, what I think would probably be better though, is if I take the actual people who retired and what the actual people that replaced them were brought in at, and do it at the individual level. Cause so what we did is at the total salary level, but I think the view that you want is these 10 people retired, this is who replaced them, and then the difference per person. And we did it just at that total level. So I can easily put that together, though.
That's good. Another question I had, which is just, I've been concerned about over the past year or so is, how much do, what are we paying for meals? How much revenue do we expect to bring in to cover the cost of meals? For lunches or breakfast and that sort of thing? Is that in the budget?
So what's in the budget is your flat food service cost. And Exeter never sees a loss of food service because the cooperative absorbs it. It's just the way that Exeter was set up and how it was divvied out when you separated. So right now, I believe there's $200,000 in the food service fund. Let me just double check.
That's correct, 200,000.
Yeah, and so then when we set revenues, we set revenues also at 200,000. So in a non-COVID year, you would not expect to see a loss in food service, nor would you have to raise any money in taxes to support food service because the revenue equals expense.
So I'm asking, yeah, that's helpful. I'm asking the question because I know some schools have gone to, you know, trying to, through, through taxpayer funds, essentially make meals at no cost for people that, that come in. You know, I think we've been able to expand some of that to those that were on, you know, reduced lunch. I think we were able to eliminate or further reduce some of those costs. But, you know, I've just been curious about what the costs are to see if that's something that, some point in time, the board or the administration want to take up to have further discussions on. But I don't even know what the costs are. I know that there's a lot of work that was done on it last year to further expand coverage. But I don't know, you know, I don't know what kind of dollars we'd be talking about to be able to, to take on something like that.
Just want to make sure you know, Patrick, that this year lunches are being provided free. Is my understanding of how it's happening this year because of the situation that Jean Pierce is, is offering it free to all the people who are. Is that, am I correct on that? That's my understanding.
So it's, it's, it's free, but it's not really free. So it's essentially the state's paying the entire portion, not, essentially they're paying the parent portion and the part that they pay. So Jean still has to manage the program. It's not a free-for-all where everyone gets filet mignon. She does have to manage the program within those constraints. And so essentially the state's paying the parent portion right now up until the end of June.
Yeah, that's, but that's what I wanted to be. I just want to make sure Patrick was aware that that was, there was no cost to our parents this year.
Correct. It's no cost to the parents, but it's just not free.
Well, nothing's free in life.
But it's not, it's not tax, well, it's taxpayer-funded at the state level. It's not taxpayer-funded at the local level, at least in terms of our budget. It doesn't show up in our budget in that way for this year. Is that what you're saying?
The only way it would not be taxpayer-funded is long as Jean operates the program within the revenue received from the state, which Jean always does.
I mean, honestly, it just sounds like it's a conversation for another day. It's a little bit more grandeur. But I, I've just been curious about that, about what the sort of, you know, what the costs are. Because I know we receive some government money that comes through grants and whatnot. But how much are we talking about would actually be coming out of our local budgets? How much do we, we pay out right now? Whether you call it a loss, or I don't know how you categorize it for accounting purposes. And how much revenue we expect? And if the revenue that we expect is 30, 40, 50,000 dollars, you know, is there, is there a will to cover that 50,000 dollars through another source, essentially a budget for it? And have the whole thing be a loss and not be collecting money? Conversation for another day, but I, but I bring it up now because it's in the context of budgeting. I was also curious about, there's a mention of a consultant. Can someone just say what, what that is? And I don't know anything about a consultant that's working with us about our staffing.
Yeah, her name is Mary Ann Nice and she is funded through the IDEA grant. And we're working on a three-year plan this year, starting with her. We laid the groundwork last year and she consulted just bits and pieces here and there. And so she's working, focusing on Main Street this year on sustainable multi-tier systems of support that really are targeted and specific in using the resources we have in the building, including the talent of the classroom teachers and the interventionists that we will have next year.
That sounds awesome. That's, that's a great program. I just hadn't heard of it, but that's awesome. That was it. I think I covered my list as I, that I typed out here on my phone, so thanks.
Can I just sort of further chime in on that with, in regards to the position and full-time being another 50,000 dollars? Kind of a two-fold question. One is, what is the impact of percentage overall if that was added in? If that is the one other piece or person that's, that would be the first level of needed response if we were to approve a higher budget increase? And secondly, is that position already needed at full-time for this year?
So I would look to Drew. So I would look to Drew and Steve, although I don't know if he can answer that yet, because we're still, we're not really that many days into this year, Dawn, to, I, I think, but I would, I don't know, maybe, maybe you already have an answer for that while Michelle and Molly are working that percentage difference.
Yeah, I, I can say her, her days are full in the time that she's here without question. I, you know, it's hard to say one hundred percent, but I, I would be pretty positive to say that she'd be able to fill her day if she was one hundred percent. I don't, I mean, there's, there's stuff happening left and right. Like that one, that example I shared earlier the other day was just a unique one to me, but it's not to her.
Yeah, Deanna, I was gonna ask you, do you feel better now after you got sick on the Chromebook? Are you okay now?
I, I will tell you, though, I do, I, I, first of all, the position was great and was so thankful for it because it's really helpful because somebody can focus on that. And today, we actually just added like another thing to her plate to be part of sort of the new student stuff, the new student list of when we get a new student that we need certain things done with Chromebooks that teachers just can't do because they're receiving the student, but their Chromebook needs to be ready when they walk in the classroom. So we've added that to her plate and she's just like, thank you. Yes, I can do this. So it, it's really been a pleasure to have somebody like that.
I can keep going if you need more time, Michelle and Molly.
Is that, are you good?
Yeah, that's good, but I'm sort of just wondering, and, and I guess I'm, I'm hopeful that you all will come to us if, if it's something that we need to approve. But with everything that's going on, I can imagine that she would be very valuable right now. And if there's ways that we can figure out to have her working five days, if with its, is it, do we use COVID response money that we put aside? Or something that this is sort of a, a result of how we're operating these days? You know, I think that it's, it, you know, really, really important. And to be honest, I can't imagine fifty thousand dollars adds that much to the budget this year and or next year. So I know we're in the beginning stages, but I would say if you guys think you need it, I think it should be in there.
It'd probably be less than fifty thousand dollars for this year, too, because we're already a third of the way through the year. So, you know, it may only be like, I don't know, thirty-five thousand, say, for that, to make it full-time for the rest of this year.
So if you added fifty thousand dollars to the budget, it goes up about point two, three percent-ish.
It went into the actual projected budget for next year and I changed her to a full-time position. And that would bring you to two point nine one.
Dawn, you're good, I guess, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm good. I mean, it's just, again, it's, you need to let us know if you think it's important, but I think the, it's, it's pretty small increase.
Can I, can I ask a question related to Dawn's point, which is that, do we, maybe Esther can, can ask that. Do we have the authority to take that up tonight if we wanted to as a board in terms of making, because it's budget-related, we said we were going to talk about the budget, to, to approve something that's a budget-related piece for this year? Did we specify in the announcement that it was only next year's budget?
Uh, no, I don't believe, let me double check to make sure that, I think I said budget workshop, but I can double check that. You mean adding the tech integrator position for this year? Is that what you're talking about, Patrick?
If we want to even have a more robust conversation about it, potentially even take a vote or whatever, if that was needed, do we, are we, are we able to do that in terms of?
Yes, you can, because it is under budget, as long as I didn't post it as just fiscal year twenty-one. I'm double checking that.
And can, can someone confirm, so for us, our approximately a thousand students and all of our, plus our teachers, we have one person to support the entire community and they're three days a week?
Yes, and to be clear, where we got that was at the high school. We have one person for seventeen hundred Chromebooks and all of the staff and families and one person at the co-op in those positions. So not saying that that's okay, but that's why we started with three, was also what was left in the COVID cares money to support that three days a week. So we arrived at that kind of basing our larger schools. We just got part, we just added help in last year's budget, a part-time position at the high school because they were finally up to all four grades having one-to-one at the end of last year. So that, that's how we arrived at three days a week. And, and I agree, I think to Drew's point, there's a need, particularly if we're looking at interventions and targeting interventions and everyone's back next year, part of that tech integration can be building kids' individual playlists and helping teachers do that with the technology, which is why we hoped for one-to-one, has nothing to do with COVID. So that, that would be twofold, you know, kind of a silver lining to that.
Can I ask a couple of questions if you don't mind? First, a question about just the format, the, the reporting. Am I wrong in that the reporting has changed? I thought there were more sub-segments from, in the last reporting, or is this the same as last year? I found this kind of cumbersome to walkthrough. Is, am I reading that wrong?
It's, we, we do have the opportunity to add the sub-segment. It's just, we just have to click that button in the report.
So am I clear on the net number of reductions in staff or, you know, employment? Do we know the net number of people who are going to be involuntarily separated?
If you're talking the general education aides, is that what you're asking, Neil?
Just, just, I mean, how many people are we laying off? I couldn't, I couldn't follow it through.
So the total number of positions are twelve for general education aides. We also are not filling any SOL position that hasn't had anybody in it. Of, of all the aides, of the twelve aides that you're looking at, three of those are picture and writing aides. Two of those have already been repurposed to be working for, with Renee for LNA's as special ed. So you're looking at one position for a picture and writing aide. Of the nine positions that we have that are working with, historically worked with first grade, but now work across grades as interventionist. This, the nine three-hour positions, three of those are currently not filled. So you've, you've got six people left. Of the six people left, Beth Renee and whoever the new principal would be looking at repurposing those through Title I position, Title I money. And how many would be hired back, I can't say for certain. So you could be looking at three, four, five physicians possibly being reduced from what I can guess. That, that's what I'm thinking. I, I don't know if that's, that would be my best guess, something of that nature.
Oh, and Neil, we are down still close to seventeen special ed paras. Doesn't mean they can't be offered a job. It might not be a regular aide para. It very well could be a special education para. So I, I feel fairly confident that people have opportunities should they choose to move over to a different type of para. They may not want to. But there are definitely, there are, there are definitely openings in the special ed para land, so to speak, that will be available for people to apply to.
As unfortunate as this is, it's driven by a need and a purpose, which is important. And people will be given the opportunity to still make a living if they choose to do so. I mean, have the opportunity to apply and all that stuff. So it's not this, so it really, it's not, okay, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think anyone's wild about laying people off in a recession. That's why I'm asking. Right. And, and I mean, to the extent that we can help these people.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your sensitivity to that, Neil. And if, if ever there was a time to do it, this year is probably it because you've got a reduced number of people in positions and you've had a repurposing of positions already. That said, I, I do certainly appreciate that because they're all people who are really good people and we want to support them.
Seems to be that, you know, things are clearly getting better. There's light at the end of the tunnel. You know, if we can hold on and help people out, let's do that. Social worker, page four, with, does someone have a read? The numbers moved around a bit between MSS and the LSS social worker. There's a net reduction of twenty-four, nine, one, nine. What's the, is there anything going on there you need, we need to know about?
What happened with that position is you had the prior social worker was split between the two schools. So that would have been the reduction from Main Street School, and then you would have added a full-time to Main Street School.
Sorry. We, we have two full-time. Nothing's going on. It's just, there, there's a net reduction. That's what caught my attention. That's just that the math involved, I guess. Okay, so everything's good there. All right, great. What's the special education director in the institutional instruct, is it instructional director positions? Had some moving targets around it? Then I miss, I mean, is there, is there something going on there? Or is, is it just the moving math of how we're dealing with moving positions around?
What line is that, Neil?
Yeah, can you comment where that, what page that's on, Neil?
Hey, the one that caught my attention was page two. Sped is special ed, right? Special ed director salary, LSS, a reduction of one eleven, nine, forty-three, eighty-four. And then special ed director salary MSS, an increase of a hundred. So that's just, is that just all the moving parts you mentioned, Renee? There's nothing really going on, right?
Well, I hope not, Neil. No, I think it's just dividing my role and the assistant director role, Abby's Hood, just bumping those out and dividing them equally between the two buildings. So I think it's a combination of my salary, proposed salary or budgeted salary for next year. Abby Hood's budgeted salary for next year divided by two into the two buildings. Or at least that's what I'm hoping, unless Molly has a different, or Michelle have a different interpretation. No, it's because this is the first budget you're gonna, that Abby Hood's in as an administrator. Remember, you approved that in last year's budget. So that's why we had to move around to accommodate both positions now that are administrative and they weren't until this year.
That's correct.
Drew, you said the library salaries, that's just offsetting the over the new person versus the person who was there before, is that, okay? So his last question I have is, so big picture, Molly, last time you mentioned one, and I still, I apologize, but it was one point seven million dollars was on track. I think that is, you, you encumbered some money, we'd spent some money, but the remainder was one, seven. Is that right?
The remainder was?
I'm getting the term.
You mean the last budget we presented?
The last time we spoke, the last meeting, you mentioned a large amount of money, which I assume meant that we were, and this may be my fault, with, that we were underspending our budget. Is that true or is that wrong?
Budget, Neil? Our current budget?
Yeah.
Balance in our current budget, correct? Our bottom line in the current budget right now.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have that in front of me, but I do believe we were looking very healthy. I'd have to pull that to see what that.
No, I don't, I don't need the details. Just, here's the concept I want to ask about, which is, so if we're, if we're doing well in terms of budget right now, right? Because we also prepaid expenses. And will likely, do we just generally and often have fund balance at the end of the year? Then in my, the way I think about it, I think, you know, it's great that you guys have done this planning and you're being very smart with money. But if we have a big cushion that we're, we're building now and it's likely just in any year, we always return money back. If at the end of the, if, if we're doing something here we don't really want to do, is there a way to kind of do a scenario analysis so that we can maybe take some risks with the budget to do, to not do some of the cuts we don't want to do? Do, do we have a cushion to play with?
No, Neil, it's, it's not really about a cushion. It's really about this, this budget. Normally, in past years, the board has won us, wanted us to come in around three percent, a three percent increase. That's really been the goal since I've worked in Exeter. So that's what we did. As far as positions being cut, like I said, the intervention program is being completely revamped. So those positions have been moved and cut based on, not on real budgetary needs. It's where we looked because we knew that that system was being redone. The only place that we made a cut that we would want to put back in, I believe, and you guys chime in, is that tech integrator. We had it in originally at five days a week and we cut it to three, trying to make sure we stay closer under the three percent than right at it.
That's great, but I just, I want to have the conversation that if we do have, at the end of the year, if we come back and have another large fund balance and we've done something we really prefer not to do now, I, I would regret that. That's all. All right.
Well, I guess to answer your question, Neil, you can do things in advance, like purchase things. To, if you wanted to free up room in the, in the next year's budget. I would just caution, we wait sometime to do that with the unknowns of COVID, but um.
I, I guess I'm just making the point that we're in good shape. If you guys want to do something or there's something you don't want to do, if there's a way of using that financial strength that we have, I would suggest you consider that. That's all I have. Thank you. Is anyone else?
I just, Esther, go ahead.
Just to answer your question, Patrick, this is, it was posted as just a budget workshop, not specific to a year.
Okay, so to that point, I'm just gonna go off here again. The, the tech integrator position, if we were to increase that to a full-time position this year, then it becomes part of the default budget next year, correct?
Well, the, if they're in there this year, then their salary would come through at the current year rate next year. But they would actually know it wouldn't be part of the default budget because they were not in the current year budget. They have to be in the current year budget, not just employed.
Okay.
And they're grant-funded, so that wouldn't become a part of the default, I don't think either.
So, and so to increase that, if we were to make it a full-time position, that we'd essentially be paying some of it out of the grant and some of it out of the, the Exeter budget, right? I mean, the Exeter general funds or whatever.
Right, that, the biggest difference is that because I funded it with the grant, it was, it doesn't include any benefits because that's the way we wrote the deposition. If we made it full-time, we'd be pretty obligated by the teacher contract to offer those benefits. Although they'd be prorated like you spoke of, so it wouldn't be a huge expense, but it would be, it might be close to that forty thousand dollar mark, Patrick, just because we have to absorb the whole benefit package because none of the benefit packages in the grant.
So I, I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna jump ahead with this and make a proposal. And, you know, we can, hopefully someone will second it for purposes of discussion and then we can go from there. I'm gonna make a proposal that we use funds from this year's budget. We had about four hundred thousand dollars, I think, at last take. That was some, you know, some monies that were potentially available for COVID-related needs. And use up to, you know, say up to fifty thousand dollars to have that position that we're talking about, the tech position, become a full-time position. So I'd like to make that.